I'd like to bring to order the San Rafael City Council Meeting of Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just for all.
Thank you. Let's see, open session, we did not meet in closed session, and therefore I'll turn to open time for public expression. Anyone wishing to address us this evening on matters that are not on the agenda, we will not be able to take action, but certainly welcome your comments. Gregory.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor, I'm here tonight just to remind the council, if it needed to be reminded, that it's been a month now since the wildfire action plan was adopted by the city council. And at the time of its adoption, many of us spoke against the immediate adoption of the plan with the idea that we needed to have public input into what that plan would ultimately look like. And my understanding was that the council favored greater public input. And there was talk about having an advisory committee or citizens group put together. In the preceding month, nothing has happened along those lines. A month has been lost on what was presented as a very urgent problem that we need to address. The correspondence that I've had with the city council since that time has indicated that what has been going forward is a proposal or the planning for a tax measure to implement the plan that needs more public input. So my request to the council again is to stop the process of looking to raise taxes and revenue for a plan that has not yet been finalized and give the public the opportunity that it has asked for to address the merits of the plan and work with the fire department to improve the plan and make it one that we can get behind, including getting behind it if in fact a tax measure is required. But it is too early to say that without implementing or designing the plan appropriately. Thank you very much.
And thank you. And I will comment, excuse me, I'm still getting over whatever I have. I will comment only for clarification with regard to a report on behalf of the community. Those of you that are here this evening and those that might be watching either now or perhaps later at their convenience, some things have happened. One, we have met with the county, to the county fire marshal and administrator and supervisor, et cetera, to have a meeting to better understand their approach and how it's going to be integrated with our framework that we still are rolling out. We've also met with our consultant with regard to timing of the tax, if there is to be such a thing, separate and distinct from the plan itself or the framework itself and the development of that. We have a better sense of the timing of that, which is not as urgent as we perhaps first anticipated. And three, we are, because of, we've got a little more room to work with the community, including you Gregory, we are now in the process, and I think I responded to you to this effect, we are in the process of forming the committee, and I can see two components of that. One, certain selected individuals, I'm saying selected because of certain background expertise and interest in the area, our fire commission, for example, several of the fire commissioners, yourself and a few others. But then also, question I have with the city clerk is if we go to the broader public, we have to go through a process of application and screening and reviewing and selection, et cetera. And now I believe we have the time to do that. So we're right on schedule. And I understand your impatience, but we're on schedule.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to hear that perhaps there's greater time. And I wonder if the council would then consider a proposal to solidify the fact that the plan needs to be amended further before its final adoption. As you recall, the plan as adopted by the council, I believe the wording was supposed to be that it was in fact a draft or an interim plan or words to that effect. And given your comments that in fact their timing is not quite as urgent as it may have appeared a month ago, perhaps it's a good time to step back from the plan as the council adopted it and to give the community greater time for the input that we saw.
No, no. Please don't misunderstand me. Because we have factored in, into our planning, considerable time for the community to react and help us refine our, quote, not plan, but rather framework, to become a plan. And it will give us time to incorporate the thinking of the community, which we very much appreciate and solicit. And the path that we're on is to do so. So it's not a plan that's been adopted, you mischaracterized it Gregory. It's a framework from which we now can start to refine and improve and approach finalization. So we're at the beginning, not at the end point. And we'll appreciate the community, excuse me, the committee, to help us in this process. So we're going about in a pretty rational way, I would suggest. And it's not appropriate for us to debate this back and forth, so I'm going to have to call.
I don't intend to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Good evening. I'm Mimi Willard from the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers. And I'm here mainly for the MMWD presentation, but I thought I would just take this opportunity to commend you for the fact that you are taking some initiative here and thinking about a fire protection plan and beginning to move forward on that, which is really something that the community appreciates. At the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers, we have spent time with the county and with the water district, looking at various issues related to fire protection and funding and so on. And I would just offer the viewpoint that I think it's really important to have whole community support in whatever you do. And that would really argue for some, if there's a tax measure, that it goes on a 20-20 big ballot, so that everybody's participating in that election, which you'll get two opportunities in 2020 between the primary and the general election. It would be, I think, unfortunate if it turned out to be an earlier election than that. I think also, it's important to be thinking about whole community buy-in in terms of funding. And parcel taxes are unfortunate because they really fall primarily on homeowners. And of course, your biggest property exposure in terms of dollar value is your commercial properties. So we would certainly encourage you to look at alternative types of parcel taxes, such as those based on per square footage of building, as is being done in LA Unified School District now this spring. And finally, I don't know how this plays out, but I know that the county is working on some kind of countywide plan. And I'm really hoping that whatever San Rafael does is well coordinated with that, so that we don't end up with something patchwork. And so those would be my two bits. Thank you very much.
And frankly, I'd very much be interested in your comments when we get closer to, you know, that point, where they have something for you to review. Interested in your comments with regard to.
We would look forward to that opportunity.
And we are intending to be in sync with the county for all the perhaps obvious reasons at this point. But we do wish to move forward, so our community is not exposed to it any longer than is necessary.
Understood. And we would be happy to provide one or more people to work with you on that. Thank you.
And thanks for your comments. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we'll close and return to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have just a few updates and announcements. First one is at the State of the City, which recently took place and was very well attended. I am pleased to say what the council already knows, which the city of San Rafael was the winner of the Joe Garberino Large Green Business of the Year Award, which we were very excited to get. And we spend a lot of time on sustainability issues and with our Climate Change Action Plan Quarterly Meeting Group that takes place. And I just wanted to bring it up now because the next meeting of the city council, we have a number of items that we think are going to relate to sustainability. Probably should bring it up again then, too. But we have the draft Climate Change Action Plan 2030 is coming up at our next meeting. And we have sustainability priorities and some other topics around that. So it's very timely in what's going on with the city right now. And then somewhat related, Earth Day is coming up on April twentieth. And there are so many different Earth Day activities that I decided that I couldn't share them all with you today because there are just so many opportunities. So if you go to our website, you'll see all of them. There's Earth Day at the library in the morning. In the Bia Vista Elementary School, they're combining Earth Day and Day of the Child. They have some really cool activities there, picking up trash. And in the picnic area, and also with activities and games and things. And there's park cleanups, both around community centers, but also with shoreline as well. So there's a lot happening around Earth Day this year. Another item is that our Albert Park Playground, which has been a significant park improvement project and use of Measure A funds for the city council, our grand opening for that is Monday, April twenty-ninth at three thirty PM. Because it's a Monday in the afternoon, there's also a soft opening on a Saturday morning, where we'll expect that probably a lot of people from the community will show up on Saturday morning, April twenty-seventh, from ten to noon. Just a couple different opportunities to kick off the completion of that project, which we think will be a very nice new amenity for that area. And then lastly, we have a couple Firewise workshops that are coming up on May second and May third. They're community meetings, and they will answer questions about how to become a Firewise community. I think more and more people are hearing about maybe that neighborhoods are doing that, but not necessarily what it means or what it takes to become one or what the process is like. So our fire department will be hosting a couple meetings, May second at the Terra Linda Community Center at six PM, and then the next day, right here in the council chambers, at six PM, to go through how you create defensible space as a property owner or a resident of San Rafael, defining what a Firewise community is and how to become one. So I think just recently read in the newspaper that communities that are, have been designated and are using that as a selling point, if you're going to sell your home, that you are in a Firewise community. And I love that thinking of how important that is and how it's a benefit to your property actually to have defensible space and become a Firewise community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for your report. Any comments or questions? In which case we'll move to the consent calendar items four A through four G. Anyone wish to have an item held? Anyone from the public wish to address us on any of the consent items? See no one, we'll close and come back for a motion or further discussion if you wish.
Actually, Mayor, can I ask that item four F, which is the Southern Heights Bridge Replacement Project, be held for a very short discussion?
Certainly. And with that exception, is there a motion with regard to the items?
I move the remaining items on the consent calendar.
And move in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am at our carries five zero, and we'll turn to item F, Southern Heights Bridge Replacement Project.
Yeah.
And do you have a question?
I do. And I apologize, had I not been on vacation, I might have been able to ask this question of staff earlier and not waste the time of the council and those here present. So, but I'll ask it now, since I didn't get that opportunity. This matter principally is funding for temporary construction easements for the neighbors, the residential neighbors around the Southern Heights Bridge. And we, as a council, of course, have been made privy to all of the details of this project over the last couple of years. It's important. It's largely being funded by Caltrans, we know that. But the negotiations that have taken place behind the scenes with the property owners, I'm sure have been done very professionally and above board. But of the eighty-three thousand, about half bit appears to be for one neighbor, about forty-five thousand, as I recall from the staff report. Can you explain why one neighbor is getting such a large share of this total amount for what is just a temporary construction easement?
I can.
Thank you.
Bill Garrett with Public Works. Councilmember, the one easement that's so expensive compared to the others is because the access to that home is on the bridge itself. So that person will be displaced from her home during construction. They negotiated a price with her to relocate her to a hotel during the construction process. So there's the hotel costs itself, food and other essentials while she's been displaced from her house. She has no ability to access her house otherwise. So she is effectively, you know, out of house and home until the construction is completed. So that's the reason the forty-five thousand dollar price tag is associated with that one property.
Thank you for the explanation.
Any question? Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Close, back, motion?
I would be happy to move that we approve this particular item four F.
Second. Move in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm at our carries four, five, excuse me, five zero, and we'll turn to a special presentation, presentation MMWD. And Jim, are you going to introduce this?
I think my sole role is to introduce general manager Ben Hornstein, who's here to give you an update on MMWD's rate increase proposals and explain that, and also talk a little bit about how it relates to the city of San Rafael and our costs.
And thanks for being here. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Phillips, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I know our respective staff enjoy a close working relationship with your public works staff and completing our pipe replacement projects in the city, trying to coordinate the timing with your road work, saving ratepayer dollars and limiting disruption to the city. And we appreciate the close working relationships. I am here tonight to talk about our, to share our rate increase proposal for the water district. I have a few comments and then a few slides I'll go through. The water district's opposing to raise water rates to invest in our aging infrastructure, to ensure we meet the mission of providing safe, reliable drinking water to the residents, responsibly manage our watershed, and continue to offer the level of service the customers expect from us. We're the oldest municipal water district in California, and we face significant challenges as many public agencies that are stewards of public infrastructure in maintaining our aging infrastructure, including three treatment plants, six dams, one hundred and twenty-eight storage tanks, and over nine hundred miles of pipeline. The average age of our infrastructure is fifty to sixty years, and we have about a two billion dollar replacement value of that infrastructure. As the largest public landowner on Mount Tam, our watershed with approximately two million visitors a year, we face ongoing challenges of responding to the climate change we're seeing and reducing wildfire risk to protect our communities. The district's dedicated to controlling rising costs and ensuring the price of water is affordable. In fact, in the last twenty-five years, there were no rate increases for fourteen of those years. At the same time, costs do continue to go up. Maintaining our infrastructure and managing the wildfire continues to be a challenge. Electric prices and all sorts of stuff. And we're seeing this around California and the country of the aging of our infrastructure and the need to redouble investments in that in a focused way. Specifically, the proposed rate increase includes two components. We're increasing our operating budget and associated fees by four percent, largely to deal with inflationary drivers. And then we're also establishing a new fee, and that fee has garnered some understandable attention. It's a capital maintenance fee to invest directly in the infrastructure and also to dedicate a portion of it specifically to add to our investment for fire protection, largely fuel reduction on our watershed on Mount Tam. The capital maintenance fee is a per meter charge, and it's based on meter size. And the funds raised will directly fund the capital improvement programs and the investment on the watershed. The fee is designed to transition the district from debt funding. The district has taken advantage of historically low rates over the last approximately ten years with borrowing. And this is shifting to a cash-funded basis. The capital program is essentially the same, but the shift is causing a one-year notable impact in a percentage basis on our rates. With that, let me go through a few slides and, of course, answer any questions you may have. So I noted the reasons of raising rates, invest in the infrastructure, better manage this long-term debt, transitioning to a pay-as-you-go cash-funded basis for our capital program, continue to responsibly manage the watershed and maintain the level of service. The two components, as I noted, the four percent revenue increase in this new capital maintenance fee to fund the capital program directly. This is a graph that's intended to demonstrate the green bars are years that there were no rate increases in the district's rate. And the others show the increases. This bottom gray line that I'm pointing to reflects where the rates would be if since nineteen ninety we increased them by inflation. So even now, you can see we're a touch below where that would be. The higher line shows where the industry, based on a fairly robust national survey, where we would be had we increased the average rate. The water industry nationally has been increasing since nineteen ninety. This is a comparative look at water agencies in the Bay Area. The first blue bar on this graph is our current rates. We're in the bottom twenty-five percent of comparable agencies. And this is where this proposed rate increase brings us. We do expect, this is a one-time shift to cash funding our capital program, that will quickly migrate back down in subsequent years. The hatched bars are those that we don't yet have what their rate increase is anticipated, but they are looking at rate increases. This is a table showing this capital maintenance fee, and it is based on meter size. This is the number of meters in our service area and the percent customers for those meter sizes. And this is a charge based on the specific meter sizes. And it goes up based on meter size. It's based specifically on the volume of water that those respective meter sizes can pull on the system. So when you invest in infrastructure, as we're doing, the meter size is a reasonable indication of the demand that could be applied on the system. It's not the use today. And the reasoning behind that is, say, a restaurant with a four-inch meter, there likely is a business reason they have that size meter, anticipated growth at some point. And when we replace our infrastructure, we design it and we size it based on future demand, potential demand on the system. We can't just look at how much water is being used today necessarily. So that drives it based on meter size, which is an industry standard for many charges in the water industry, to use meter sizes as an indication of the amount of water that a customer may pull in the future from the water system. Of course, we have watershed, and we're all very aware of the growing challenges in terms of the climate and what that could mean in terms of wildfires. We do have twenty-one thousand acres to manage in the watershed. We have a thousand acres of fuel breaks to maintain, fire roads, as I noted, two million visitors. We do a lot of partnering with the cities and the fire departments and all stakeholders that are dealing with this issue. And specifically, this new fee is dedicating a million dollars a year additional to our current expenditures to help address that challenge. This is a look at some comparable agencies to give an indication of a unique aspect that faces the district. If you look at for the number of connections, the pipes, particularly tanks and pump stations that we have, it's really order of magnitude higher than other agencies. And that's driven in large part by the unique and gorgeous topography that we have here, where you just need a lot more tanks and pumps to deliver water to the customers. Of course, when you have that sort of infrastructure spread over a comparable rate base over time, that does challenge the rates. This is a graphic to impress you in the complexity of our system, but not really. It's just intended to show that, right as we know, under every street and hill, you see our tanks and pipes. And it's quite an infrastructure load that we carry to maintain and invest in over time. This is to show the impact of this proposal to the average customer. The average customer is defined over here based on water usage and meter size. Specifically, the impact for this average customer is defined, the four percent increase results in a two dollars seventy-one cents per month. We bill bi-monthly, but this is on a monthly basis. And this capital maintenance fee for the customers, as described here, is thirteen dollars and sixty-three cents. You can see it does escalate. That's assuming four percent. The proposal to the board is to increase with an inflation index. This fee is capped at four percent. So we are showing the highest increase it would be, not knowing, of course, what the index will show. And we did want to share the direct impact to the city. It's eighty thousand dollars. It is, I believe, the highest of any city, the largest city, as you would expect. This captures all of your facilities, parks, recreational pools and the like, and driven, again, by the meter size and the number of meters and how it rolls up collectively. So with that, I'll take any questions or however you want.
And first, excuse me, thanks for the presentation and, of course, the service that you provide. It's been quite good, I would suggest. So thank you for coming to us. Questions of Jim? Mayor, but?
Help me understand. I'm looking at your published capital budget, your capital improvement plan for fiscal year nineteen is thirty-five million dollars. And your total request here is sixteen billion dollars. That's like a fifty percent increase in your capital budget. Help me understand what happened in between fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty that requires a fifty percent increase in your capital budget.
Right. And in fact, the capital budget has gone down significantly. So going forward for FY twenty, that this rate proposal is intended to support is a twenty million dollar capital budget. So the board pushed down the investment significantly, as you noted. This fee is designed to fund sixteen point five million dollars of the twenty million dollar capital program.
So you're not increasing it at all? You're just changing the way you're collecting it?
That's exactly it. There, in fact, there's a decrease year to year. Twenty million dollars is probably a ten-year average of our capital budget. So that's not going up. This fee is strictly a shift from bond funding to pay-as-you-go cash funding in the capital program, which while it does have a notable year-to-year impact, over time, it's a very significant decrease in cost to the rate payers not paying interest. In fact, interest payments over the thirty-year debt approximately double the total cost over time of the program to the rate base.
But what it does do is allow long-term assets, the cost of them to be spread over the useful life of that asset, so that today's people aren't paying for something that then is going to be in service for, in some cases, well, most of the system is as old as we are, right?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a fair and accurate point. What we're investing is largely in pipes, rehabilitation of pump stations and tanks. These are investments that are really going to go on every year forever. And to continue to to pursue debt for these ongoing investments is arguably akin to credit card routine purchases. Our thought is moving to a direction where we reserve debt funding for big, either unexpected expenditures or the very large one-off expenditures. We have six dams on the watershed. We're going to be celebrating a hundred-year anniversary for our large structural Alpine Dam. Nothing lasts forever, and that will be a significant cost that really will make sense, and we likely would have no choice but to bond fund those sorts of very large expenditures.
And what's driving your, I mean, this is a dramatic change in ratemaking methodology and approach. Why are you doing that now?
The district, through pursuit of debt funding for the last six, eight, 10 years, has been bumping up against our debt capacity to where, to maintain the good debt bond ratings that we have, we really did need to shift to a pay-as-you-go or cash-funded basis for infrastructure.
So you have to, in other words?
I think to be fiscally prudent and responsible, it's the right direction to go.
Thank you.
Andrew.
Just to kind of stay with Mary Beth's line of questions. If you maintain the status quo and you decided to embark upon the capital improvements that you believe are necessary for the system, but you stayed with a debt financing model, can you describe for us in a narrative fashion what that would mean to the ratepayer? You said that there would be added costs due to interest charges, but what would it look like on bills going forward over the next, you know, set of years for the typical ratepayer?
So we have a 10-year capital improvement program, approximately $20 million a year, $200 million. The interest payments for the debt, the debt would be spread over 30 years, would be about $170 million. That's almost a doubling. And so, but that would be spread over 30 years to fund a 10-year capital program. So then you continue that direction. You know, it's like, you know, we use credit cards and can get in trouble, and we've seen, I'm sure you're aware of, public agencies that have gotten into trouble with debt, and the debt load would be an increasing portion. And kind of fiscal bonding issue is your ability to cover your debt, debt coverage ratio, and that was getting very, very thin. So rates would need to go up just to maintain the required in your bond covenant, what debt coverage ratio you would need. So collectively, next year, maybe the year after, the rates would be lower because we'd be bonding, but projecting that out, we would certainly cross lines where bonding would be significantly more expensive than the direction we're going.
The assumption, I think implicit in what you're saying, is that the capital maintenance fee, if I've got the terminology right, will go away in 10 years. Am I correct?
I did not intend to suggest that. This is an establishment of a fee to cash fund the capital program. It's funding a defined, and these things certainly shift, so I don't want to say it's not going to adaptively manage as things happen in the field, but to fund the 10-year capital improvement program, most certainly, that capital improvement program goes forward forever. So I don't know if it would be funded necessarily by this fee or some other mechanism, but the investments in the watershed, I noted the average age is 50 or 60 years for our infrastructure, and replacement value over $2 billion. So $20 million is 1%. And you start doing the math, we put together a community advisory panel to review what we're doing, and their recommendation provided back to the board was, you are not investing significantly. You should invest more, and this fee should be higher. I'm just sharing that there are perspectives in both directions in terms of what the board's trying to navigate.
Mr. Hornstein, I'm not quarreling with your ultimate goal. I think it's laudable and worthwhile to make the necessary improvements and to do it in the most cost-effective way. So if moving away from debt financing is the most prudent thing to do, and I'm no expert on it, then I think that's absolutely appropriate. I just don't want citizens of San Rafael to come away from your presentation if they were to watch it online or read it in some other forum, come away with the sense that somehow they're going to embark upon it, or there's going to be a sudden jump in rates that will flatten out at some point in the foreseeable future once we get through this program that you're embarking upon, because my guess is, as you just indicated, these capital needs will continue indefinitely, and it's more than simply a 10-year program. So that intersection of the lines between debt financing and cash financing, pay-as-you-go financing, may not actually occur. I mean, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I just meant the intersection in terms of the alternative of continuing debt funding if we were financially able to. Next year would be, and the year after, likely less on the water bill, but at some point, I think it's fair to say that would be a much higher cost for the ratepayer than the direction we're proposing now. And to clarify, I, this is not just, I want to reinforce, this is not just a 10-year investment program. This goes long into the future, and with the infrastructure and the age of the infrastructure, I have to expect that rates will continue to go up.
My name's Armando Quintero, and I'm a board member with MMWD, and I represent San Rafael. And there's a couple of things that Ben said that I wanted to sort of help flesh out a bit, I think, in my thinking about all this, and one of them is that, as he mentioned, for the last several years, we've been doing debt funding, and that's allowed us to do some significant project improvement. We replaced most of the water tanks in San Rafael, or rather, in the water district, and previously, they were redwood tanks. And in something like an earthquake, it's easy to imagine a redwood tank literally just shaking apart. So now we have a number of steel tanks in the district, and we've also had to rebuild some of our water treatment plants, which is an expensive task. And I know that recently, the city of San Rafael had some presentations on climate change impacts to the city. Well, when you look at the water district and the potential that we're looking at when it comes to climate change, we are actually, we're talking now about actually having a category of expenses related to climate change adaptation. And a good example is that we've been informed by PG&E that in the event of red flag days in the future, they're going to shut off the power to the water treatment plants. So what do we do? We have to build, we actually have to put in place a power generators that can function when PG&E is turning off the power to the water supply that provides MMWD customers, you know, with their waters. That's an expense that we did not expect. And the way I also have looked at this is that when we talk about the combination of debt financing and pay-as-you-go, right now, we are paying down these bonds, and at some point, there's going to be a cycle where we're going to be eligible to reissue bonds and flatten that out again going forward. And I think it's really important to remember that in the, since 1994, there've been 14 years when there were no rate increases, and that, as a community, put us behind the eight ball. You know, it really did. We could have had investments there, I think, that we could have been making that could have kept this up. So in a way, we've been, even though there was a, there was a lack of investment, but it was, there was pressure to not raise rates, and so now, what we're trying to do is figure out, to Mary Beth's or Councilmember Bushy's question, it's, so how do we balance these two things and go forward? And one of the things that I really feel pretty strongly that we have to do, certainly as a water district, is continue to do a better job of informing the community of what it's going to take to manage all of this going forward on a regular basis, so that it doesn't seem like we are jumping into this every time there's a, you know, a biannual, annual rating.
And so, Armando, thank you for saying that, because that's actually what I was getting at. I'm anxious to learn more about some of the specific substantive issues you've indicated will be components of this capital improvement plan and maintenance plan, but right now, I'm just interested in ensuring that we maximize clarity and transparency to our citizens of San Rafael. I really appreciate your coming forward and sharing this because it helps to do that, but particularly on the funding side, if people truly understand whether they're paying through the old model or paying through the new model, what are they going to be paying? That's important for them to know, and I don't want them to sense, to get the feeling that what you're proposing is going to generate a real savings to them in the near term, because it doesn't sound like it will. You have expenses you've got to manage. I want to yield my time, because others have questions up here, but I did have one just off-the-cuff question that perhaps Ben Hornstein, you can answer. How would a typical ratepayer know if they've got a 5/8 inch meter versus a 3/4 inch meter, so they can check and determine, are they going to be paying $160 or $200 and something
I believe on the water bill they receive, there's an indication of the meter size.
Excellent. Thank you.
John?
Great. Thank you. Thank you both for presenting to us today. And I don't want you to take my comments and questions, is that we don't agree that MMWD is doing a great job of delivering clean water to the county and to the citizens of San Rafael, because, you know, it is true, when you look down at the cost per gallon of water that we get, and we should be very grateful that we have that opportunity to live here, to have that. That being said, first suggestion is to contact Rebecca at our staff to figure out how to do a much better website, because, and I'm not being facetious here, because I tried to find a lot of stuff on your website, and it is impossible to navigate, and I consider myself fairly tech-savvy. I was looking for information on your bonds that were issued in 2012, 2016, and 2017. Can't find it anywhere, other than in your draft report that references those. So I don't know what they were used for, how much they were, how much you issued. So that would be a first question. You've issued three series of bonds over the last nine years. How much did you raise?
60 million.
60 million?
60 million.
Okay, of that 60 million, what did it get used for? You mentioned redoing the tanks. I would assume it used for some of that, the upgrading of the treatment plant.
Sure, I mean, two years ago, I don't know how many of you even noticed, that we had to replace the water main on the Miracle Mile, and it went from, it went from before United Market around the corner and up to Safeway in San Antonio. And that was, we had to do jobs like that. And one of the things that we're doing also right now is some of the pipes that have been replaced in very recent, I don't think we have any more of these in the ground anymore, but we, until just a few years ago, were replacing redwood pipes.
Sure.
In the ground in the county.
No, I understand that what you're doing is needed. What I'm saying is that, as a ratepayer and as a citizen, I can't go anywhere to find where you're using the money, and so when you're asking for more, I'm questioning, well, okay, what did they use the last $60 million for over the last nine years? And I can't find it anywhere. It may be there, but it's not very intuitive to let me know that you did replace miles of water main there. And that would be comforting to me to know that you're using that. So that's suggestion one.
And we do have a planned upgrade to our website. We do know we have a bit of work to do, and we'll take the specific comment as well to assist in the navigation of our financials.
Yeah, and I'm not putting Rebecca on notice here, but she did a great job with redoing our website when the grand jury report came out and talked about transparency in government in the website, and we didn't have the best of grades. We turned that around rather quickly under her leadership, and so I think it would be a good task for you guys to undertake as well.
But you can't hire her.
But you can't hire her, yes, yes, yes. Clearly, you can't hire her. So as it goes forward now on these proposed rate hikes, where can we find a copy of the CIP program that is going to say what you're using these funds for and when they're going to be deployed? Because I couldn't find that in the draft, in the draft, 2019 draft form that I was able to find that went through all the numbers, I didn't see really any call out of any specific
That should be available on the website.
Well, it might be, I just, I couldn't find it anywhere, and I don't know if anybody else.
I think it's as simple as putting a link to our capital improvement plan, because our engineers have a very clear plan that's miles, it's something like seven miles?
A year.
Seven miles a year. There are actually maps that show you which areas are going to be affected. There's, so that actually exists, and we just need to put a clear link to that.
Right, so like, if we're raising 16 and 1/2 million dollars in this first year, are you going to deploy 16 and 1/2 million dollars in that year, and 16 and 1/2 million dollars the next year, and 16 and 1/2 million dollars in the year after that, for however long it takes to refresh the infrastructure that we have? So that would be something that I think, you know, for those of us who can't attend a meeting at 9:00 in the morning on the third Tuesday of each month, or can't find it on the website, it's very important, if you want to get support of the ratepayers, to, for them, for us to be able to understand what's being asked. So I appreciate that. So when you, in your draft, some of the assumptions that you used to justify the increase in costs are this 4% inflator, this cap 4% inflator, based upon a certain index that I wasn't familiar with, but it is what it is. But one of the things I noticed is in your construction cost, you put in a 9% annual inflator for that line item. And I'm just wondering where that comes from, where you're expecting 9%. We all use the same terminology that said, hey, the fires, you know, caused everything to go up, but there will be a point in time when that is behind us, and those construction costs will kind of hopefully tamper down, but seeing a 9% cost of inflation just on the construction cost, I'm just wondering where that came from.
My understanding, that came from looking at past years, recent, recent past years. Were that not to happen, there's significant more capital that that money would get diverted to, more pipes or more tanks or pump stations rehabbed and work on the watershed or treatment plants.
Right, I understand you're not lacking for projects that have needs, but in terms of, again, transparency of saying, we're expecting this when we don't really know that that's going to happen. This has been a very, you know, dramatic last two years when it comes to the fire season, and obviously, we're planning for that with our fire plans, but we don't, and, you know, no one can anticipate that we're going to have a Paradise or Santa Rosa every year that will keep the cost of construction escalating at such a high level. And so when you're putting that kind of inflator in there, it makes us think, well, are we really paying for something that we don't need now by inflating it that much? Just kind of a check on that. The other piece that, maybe this is something that is done in the municipal, you know, utilities districts, but your report, your draft report, the consultants, when it came to reserves and funding your reserves, you know, they're calling out for an operating fund reserve of 50% of O&M expenses, on top of that, an emergency reserve of $2 million, and a capital fire fund flow of 100% of water capital projects in reserves. So I'm looking at your reserves for, what is it, an $80 million budget, and you guys are carrying a lot of money on reserves. And is that, is that a standard practice? I don't know, but is that a standard practice to have reserve levels that high?
I believe that our reserves are on the low end for comparable water utilities, and it's, I think, largely driven by the nature of the work in the infrastructure. Specifically, you know, pipes fail, unexpected things happen, emergency response conditions occur. So an initial look at our reserves, they do seem to be a bit on the low-end side from industry standard. The half of the operating budget is a target. We aren't there, we aren't really close to that yet in terms of where we'll be. It's a goal.
But I would imagine that when... But I would imagine that when put into the model for projecting these rate increases, that the goal of attaining that fifty percent operating budget reserve drove some of the increase in costs.
But actually, one of the things that we talked about there is having the ability to bond additional projects is actually what we're looking at as our emergency reserve right now. So, which I think you're suggesting that we're trying to build up that reserve to get up to that number that you're talking about.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering if that, I mean, it's an aspirational target, obviously, that you're trying to get there. And is, are these rates, you know, are they higher than they might need to be to, because we're not only trying to, you know, in your presentation, we're talking about funding capital improvements, which everybody can kind of understand and see. It's the real stuff that we can feel and touch. But when it comes to a number that we're just banking away, that taxpayers and rate payers are paying to get to some number, I was just wondering, you know.
Well, I mentioned a couple of things. One of the things that's happened in the past, if you look at the past reserves that the water district had, whenever we had flat rates, those reserves dropped. So what happened is personally, we shouldn't have not raised rates because had we not raised rates, we would probably still have a decent reserve, frankly. But in the situation that we're in now, because we sort of maximized our bonding ability and being able to maintain the debt service ratio, which is our ability to pay, and there's a, you know, there's a certain, the number that we update is 1.25 in terms of being able to keep our debt service ratio above that, we right now have a healthy debt service ratio ability. But what we're doing is we're looking at the additional bonding as our emergency reserve. So rather than going to the number that you saw that the consultants recommended, we're keeping that only to use it for insurance rather than having a bank account that's got that money just waiting.
Okay. Let's see. The other question is in terms of how this is being proposed. And it's, you know, it's, to me, it's just quite unique because it basically requires a negative consent to go through.
Do you want to know where it came from?
Well, no, I just, I mean, I understand that, you know, it was legislation that, you know, that allows you to.
Prop 2018, I mean, is a Prop 13.
Right.
Is actually what generated the Prop 2018.
Right, right. You know, I understand, I understand that. But in terms of that most, like I said, most folks can't follow what's going on in your meetings because they're not televised. They're, you know, you don't have the ability to attend, I mean, you can attend them, but it's not very convenient for most people. So that the first that they hear about this is either through word of mouth or through a mailer that says your proposed rates are. And if you want to protest it, just go ahead and fill out this, you know, sign this form and give us your information and say no. And then if we do that, and I would wonder, in the past, rate increases under this, what percentage of protest did you actually receive of the rate payers? And what would it, would it be a majority? So if there's sixty one thou, how many rate payers are there? And how many negative responses are needed for this not to go through?
Yeah. It's fifty percent plus one of our customer base that would legally bar the rate increase. I do want to note, as you've heard many years of flat rate increases, and I think the history of the district is that the board does not use the formal legal yardstick as an indicator. They're generally very responsive to the community and shift direction as needed based on feedback. That's really illustrated, even as most recently as two years ago, the board did not follow through with a rate increase in the way it was proposed in the 218 notice. And I think we had six hundred noes.
Protests.
Protest, formal protests.
Six hundred, but how many, that was what, one percent of the rate payers?
Right. But I'm trying to share that the board still chose to move forward in a direction lower than what was in the 218.
Sure, sure. No, I understand that. And I'm sure those of us that didn't have a rate increase appreciate that. But I think you can understand, and again, it's not individually, but understand that when folks are asked to pay for additional items, having an understanding of what they are and how, and how they can find out about them is very critical to get the support behind it. And the last piece, the last question I'll have is that I was reading, you know, one of the letters to the editors from Paul Primo of Cost. And he posed a question that I'd like to just hear you guys answer, is that this sixteen point five million dollars, his proposal was just, you know, at a buck sixty-five to every one of the bills to spread it evenly across rather than using the meter size to generate that, which means that everybody's just paying the same amount rather than a restaurant on a four inch meter that might use a whole lot more water. It may, it may not, than a residence. And the resident is actually, because there's more of them, is paying, paying more of that sixteen point five million dollars. According to your graph, they're paying probably fifty, over fifty percent of it in the residences where they might not use through either conservation or whatnot, might use as much water as someone with a four and eight inch meter. Did you guys look into that proposal and see why that, I'd like your answers to why that wouldn't make sense?
We did develop this rate approach with a rate consultant well established in the water industry. And we did have that person, in fact, take a look at this specific proposal you're referencing, who indicated that wouldn't be legal in context of the 218 as it was described in detail. Certainly, though, an alternative would be to just increase rates, the fixed fee and based on usage instead of a dedicated approach as we're taking now. I think the approach we're taking is consistent with most water agencies, for example, connection fees. When someone hooks up into the system, they pay based upon the meter size. Our fixed fees, portion of the water bill today, as well as every single agency we've looked at, we've looked at a few dozen, the fixed fees are based on meter size. So it truly is an industry established approach to utilize meter sizes. When we're putting in a new pipe, this is going to last, we anticipate, a hundred years with modern materials and techniques. And we have to size it. We have to size it based upon projected demand. And meter size is a established way to indicate what that restaurant could be using in the future. Or what the next person that buys that resident, they could double the usage of what someone's using now. So these long-term.
I understand there's probably no perfect, perfect way that's going to satisfy everybody's needs. And I just wanted to kind of get your input on that. And I guess the very last thing is, reading in the draft, is that you do have the ability to either put it on the bill, the bi-monthly bill, or to put it on the tax bill, or to do a combination of both. And my personal take is if I can see it on my bill every two months, and I can see what it's going for, and it doesn't show up as another one of those line items on my two-page property tax bill, it's a little bit easier for me to understand. It's a little bit easier for me to see where that's going and to see what I'm paying for each time. And I'm just wondering why you're choosing the tax bill piece rather than the, your actual water bill?
Yeah. One of the most significant reasons of using the property tax bill as the means to collect the fee is, as we've talked about, these are very long-term investments. The property tax bill goes to the property owner, of course. Water bills are often paid by renters, property tenants, and businesses and the like that may be here for a year or two, but maybe not in five years or 10 years. So they aren't benefiting from these long-term investments in the infrastructure as property owners are. You know, the quality of the water, the reliability of the water does benefit a property owner in terms of property value over the long term. So that really is one of the key reasons it's being proposed on the property tax bill.
Okay. And that, you know, the logic behind that, I can see some of it, but we're all benefiting regardless if we live here for six months to a year, or the people that are going to move into that rental house, you know, 10 years from now, that haven't paid anything, they're going to benefit from the people that are coming. And then they're in turn going to benefit from those people that are paying it. So I don't, I, while I guess I'll agree to disagree that that is the best way to do it. I think that the water bill is, everybody sees what's going on. Everybody knows what they're paying for. It's completely transparent. And I don't know truly if, you know, in terms of these meter sizes, if the owner of the apartment building, for example, owns all those meters and there's one parcel, is it truly, you know, similar to other tax initiatives that have been put on, you know, for schools, for example, that are paid by a parcel rather than the size, the number of units that are there? It seems that, you know, a person with a single-family residence, you know, might pay the same bill as an apartment with fifteen, you know, people going into that school. You see what I'm saying? Is it's like, so that's why I think that the individual bills, if, you know, landlords want to pick up their water bill for their tenants, they can. But if they don't, then that's part of what we're all seeing. So that's just my two cents on it.
You know, just mention one thing, and that is that we have to do, we have to base our rates on a cost of service analysis. And so the framework in which we're able to look at how those costs are distributed to the customers and users is actually dictated in this cost of service framework. And so we're not inventing how to do this. We're being given options. And the cost of service study, it's a giant document, of course, but we are basically sort of, in part, it's the legal, it's the legal direction from Prop 218 that tells water districts how we can separate.
Sure.
And so that's.
No, if I read the draft report right, or that you have the option of putting it on the bill, putting it on the tax bill, or a combination of both, and you're choosing, you're not being directed or required to put it on the property. So this is a.
Me to apply that. I was going to the question.
Okay, okay, yeah. So that would be.
Sorry about that.
No, 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 that's fine. That would be my suggestion there.
Kate, are there any questions?
I actually have just very pedestrian questions. My colleagues had excellent ones. And first, thank you for coming to the city council. And I know you're going to other councils because, to John's point, I can't make it to your meetings either. And I think it's great that you're giving the opportunity to the public to weigh in. So my very kind of pedestrian, basic ones was exactly the one that you just finished on was, to me, I know the water, as you've explained, how utilities are funded differently or how they have different options. But as a homeowner, to me, it makes sense to have my water-related charges on my water bill and the property ones. And that's just more, I know part of what you're doing is getting input. So I just think from a regular person understanding, that to me makes more sense. So that's just purely input. You've already explained why you've done the way you have. And then you've talked about the four percent. And in your presentation, you said there's an industry number that you use. Again, I'm not sure why there wouldn't be CPI. Just trying to make it simple and understandable to the rate payers so they don't feel that something is going on. They don't understand, like, oh, I get that. It's on my water bill, CPI. That we can understand because it relates to other ways that things are funded in our lives.
Yeah. It essentially is a CPI. Specifically, it's a, they call it an E and R, Engineering Construction Index. And it's the Bay Area Index that directly reflects the cost of construction. So it actually is a more precise and targeted inflation factor versus a more global CPI. And based on where that is capped at four percent, this fee would increase accordingly because this fee is solely dedicated for construction, for capital investments.
Right. And I understand when you explain that. But again, I was just trying to use terms that the average person understands. So, yeah.
There's something that comes up along these lines, and that is, you know, right after the housing price collapsed, as you all experienced with the city, the contracts that you let came in with really good bids. You know, you remember that period of time. But we had the same experience. But as a district, what we did is when we got these really good bids at a price that was more than competitive, we turned around and made, did additional projects. So we sort of, we advanced the work on our list during those times. So, I mean, that, I mean, what Ben's talking about, I think, is that the industry's inflation rate gets sort of the maximum that we were expecting.
And then my only other comment, again, to echo what was said about the website, because I was curious what size meter I had. And we only get the water bills not that often. And, yeah. And so I went online, because for PG&E and all the other ones, I can go online, put in my account or put in my number, and up it comes. And I, for the life of me, if I could do that on the website, I couldn't figure it out. And I'm pretty savvy as well.
There is something called AMI. And what that does is it actually puts a, it's like a equivalent of a cell phone transmitter on your water meter. And I can see my water usage on my phone.
Right. So it's a smart meter. Again, I was just, for many other services that we have in our lives, we can just go online and put it in. So again, just in terms of transparency and ease of use. And, you know, we're all catching up. We're part of bureaucracy. So just, just more input on that. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just say one thing.
Please, yeah, please.
Just, just to be clear, because I know that in certain things where there's an inflator put in, like the four percent to the construction piece, and it's capped at that, is there anything written into it that says if on years where the inflation is higher than four percent or the factor is higher than four percent, let's say it's six percent one year, and the next year it's two percent, that you can catch up for that? Because I've seen those in some things where if it exceeds, and you kind of have this bank of unused inflation that in a year that it's not, that it can be brought back up to that, rather than in a year that it's two, you only get two. You don't get to go back and take out the another two.
Unless you're suggesting I bring back that recommendation.
I'm not. I'm not.
I was trying to be cute. Excuse me. There are no plans to do that. This would be a year-to-year based on wherever the index is capped at four percent, year-to-year. So we would not be going back and regroup.
Thank you.
And that might apply if you knew exactly how much it was going to cost. This is a little more fluid than that. Significant improvements over time are a finite number. Most of the questions have been asked, and I certainly wish to thank you. And we'll ask the public to speak here in a moment. And I guess, I was a little bit surprised with the meter assessment, I'll call it, rather than usage, because they're trying to reduce the individual usage. And yet that's what you're receiving. And therefore, shouldn't you pay more if you're using more? There seems some, some relationship that I guess I would feel more comfortable with, although I do understand you're talking about future tense and the possibility of using so much more. If you're using a four versus a two, I understand you need to develop the infrastructure to do so. But I guess my first reaction was, geez, why don't they just increase it based on the amount I use? And if it's different from the others, I pay more or less. To me, that makes probably a little more sense. But you've already answered that. So I'm not going to ask you to respond. The one thing I'm interested in, though, is the wildfire. You've heard earlier, and we've been working on this issue for some time, including some discussions we've been having with the county. A great deal of your land falls within the latter jurisdiction. And I'm curious as to how you've decided a million bucks is the right number for your turf, so to speak.
Sure. Several years ago, the board actually contracted with UC Davis Watershed Sciences Group and the Forest, and the State Forest Service to come in and do a study on Mount Tam to tell us what is the best strategy and what are the best methods that we have to use. And we're in the fifth year of that study now. And there, I think it's six plot studies that were something like six hectares in sight. And what they did is they came in and they, you know, they did different treatments, which means in one case, they removed all the understory and rounded it up into, you know, into just wood chips. And in other areas, they just monitored it without making any changes. And then they went through, took out native plants or non-native plants in one area. But what they're doing is they're looking at how the mountain, what the status of the mountain is now and the watershed. And so we're getting ready to start implementing that plan based on that information. But we're going to be looking at it in sort of a reverse triage. So we're going to be making sure that in the first years, we hit the highest priority sections of the mountain and work backwards to do our best to protect the watershed and the communities. And, you know, the thing about fire, of course, is that a devastating fire, along with being a threat to homes, would be a threat to water quality. And a devastating fire would also increase the likelihood of landslides and material moving into the reservoirs, making them smaller in terms of their capacity. And the other thing is that when fires And the other thing is that when fires occur, and you get runoff from ash and all the other things that happen in a fire, it actually puts contaminants in the water. And so what will happen is the water treatment, water treatment costs go way up. So a catastrophic fire on the mountain could have far more impact than just, than just immediate human and property risk. So we, I think we're poised in the next few years to really start implementing that. And you're gonna, you're gonna see more and more attention from the district and our partners in managing the watershed. I will mention that the district was sort of the leader in putting together a partnership with National Park Service, state parks, and county parks, because they, those other agencies manage part of the watershed as well. And we're actually working in cooperation with them, so that we're all applying the same science, the same strategy, and we're actually working literally as, treating the mountain as one mountain. We're doing that also.
Good, because it is a concern to the community, as you well know. And as I said, you're a major player in that regard. I went to an event that Mill Valley had with regard to wildfire, and I know they're certainly concerned, as we all are, but certainly because of proximity, concerned about Mount Tam and the possible danger that it represents.
And I might say the historic danger. If you go to the Marin History Project, they have a website where you can hit a video that animates, and it shows you all the fires from the turn of the last century to present. And everybody in Marin should see that, because it's very serious business in terms of what's happened there in the last hundred years.
Good point. I'll now ask for a public comment, and if you would stay, and once again, thank you, pardon me, stay for the presentation, or their comments, rather, in case there are questions that need to be addressed by you. Good evening, once again.
Yes, Mimi Willard from Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers. May I request five minutes as a representative of an organization?
Yes.
Thank you. So first, I just want to reiterate that we all agree it's important to invest in infrastructure. The question is, is this the right plan, is this a fair plan? And we at COST believe it is not one, and the IJ Editorial Board, which is not normally a very radical organization, agrees with us, and has called for the Water District to reconsider and develop a plan that has broad community support. I'd like to provide some perspective on a couple of things that you were just told. The question was asked by John Gamblin, why could you not go with the primo idea? And the answer was, well, it's not legal in the context of Prop 218. And similarly, Director Quintero said, we have to base it on the cost of services analysis, which is dictated here. Well, basically, what they're saying is, the train left the station. We mailed out the mailers, and now we can't change what we sent in the mailers unless we start over again. And we pleaded with them not to send the mailers, because we could foresee that this was the consequence of it. And we've been told that there's lots of flexibility, but that flexibility is really not legally there. So other comments here. This meter size metric doesn't appeal to the common man on the street. Everybody says, why don't they just do it on usage? And I won't reiterate the primo plan, but it provides them with the necessary amount of money. So the notion is, well, okay, we're gonna, that this is a metric of future ability to draw upon the system, the restaurant, for example. And if that's the case, then why is there an exemption for private fire lines, who, if there's a fire, are gonna use a tremendous amount of water? And then once you start to go down that road, you ask, well, what about? Twenty percent of the people are gonna not be paying 163, they're gonna be paying 409 or higher, because they have one-inch or larger meters. Now county code is requiring one-inch meters for sprinkler systems, and many of those people are using very small amounts of water, but they're going to be charged as if their sprinklers turned on, while the commercial properties with the private fire lines that serve as hydrants and sprinklers won't. So the system basically doesn't appeal to people's fundamental sense of fairness. Now, as far, we had, they did not mail a form, I just want to correct that statement. We created a form, I have some with me, we've also posted it on our website, costmarin.org. It would, there would get a lot more protests if there were a form rather than two paragraphs telling people how to submit forms. And I also appreciate that you mentioned that much of the development work on this was done at nine a.m. committee meetings, of which there's no video. And in many cases, the PowerPoints have not been posted either. So there's a lot to be improved upon as far as transparent process. So, and we had a Citizens Advisory Committee panel that was handpicked, it met three times, there are no minutes, there was no report, there was a two-page letter saying, well, the needs really are greater than this, which could be the case, but I don't consider that adequate participation of the public, as you were talking about, for your own process in looking at fire protection. So I think that rather than going on, that would hit on the high points that I hope that you would consider, and I really am hoping that you might stand up on behalf of the city, which is potentially gonna get crowded out of the tax, off the tax bill with its own tax measure for fire protection, by something that belongs on the water bill. So I hope that in your own best interest, that you will tell the district that you oppose the plan in this form, and that you would support an alternative plan, and encourage them to go ahead and do that, in your best interest and those of the citizenry.
And thanks for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ethan.
Good evening, Dave Bonfilio. I was not planning on speaking to this, but after hearing your questions, they were the same questions my wife and I had. I've got a background in finance, I got the flyer, and I said, what? Read it three times, and I still didn't understand it. I agree with you, John, it should be on our water bill, not on our property tax, because when we get our property tax bill, you look at all those different items, and you're going, what? Knowing what size meter we have, I had no idea where that information was. I have no control over that. It was the meter size when I bought the house, so why should I be penalized just because it was already there when I bought the house? So I agree with the previous speaker. Please ask him to go back to the drawing board and redo this proposal. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment. Logan.
Logan Gregory Paulus. I share all of the comments that have been made by the public in response to this, and also the questions and issues raised by the council members. I thought you all did an excellent job raising major issues. The one point that I would make that I didn't hear was there's nothing that's been said about earmarking the funds that would be set aside for the capital improvement. They've talked about collecting funds for a capital improvement, but we've also heard that the district has major bond funding issues, and it sounded like, reading between the lines or listening between the lines, that the district is actually bumping up against its ability to continue to issue bonds. And that's why they need to go to the public, basically as a secondary way to raise money, since they can't get money on the bonding. But there's nothing that's been said about, if we collect this money, it is going to be set aside in a specific account and only used for those capital improvements, as opposed to using it for ongoing operations or to pay back already existing bond debt. And I'd ask the council to look into that issue, and I'd ask the members of the Metropolitan Water District to address that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will ask when we're through with public. Next person?
I'm Ruth Pratt of San Rafael. And I was just looking at my letter of November of 2015, the last time the rate increase was proposed. And what I found very strange was even though those operating expenses were supposed to go up four percent a year, my estimates were mine went from $455 a year to $587, which was a 29% increase. So they're proposing another four percent, and I'm still questioning that specifically. But my biggest issue, and you've talked about it quite a bit, is regarding this capital maintenance fee. I think MMWD needs to reconsider their options for a more equitable and affordable fee to fund the infrastructure projects. Do not put that fee on the property tax bill. Like Mr. Gamblin said, I want to see that on my water bill, so that I can track that with each bill I get. And I also think that it's gonna have a negative effect on other measures that come up on our property tax bill, like for school improvement, that will make me less likely to vote for those tax increments. If every tax bill I get on my property shows a greater, greater increase, which is a problem as it is right now. I also think that that would be the fair way to do it, and it would spread those infrastructure costs equitably across ratepayers. I also think that you do need to look at that equity, because like they've mentioned, some of, like renters that are directly billed, they are exempt, as well as some of these that get their water through the fire line. And as Mary Beth mentioned about the pay-as-you-go, I don't think that's the appropriate way. You should continue to look at a bond measure to look at structuring these payments over time. And the last thing I want to say is, when the gentleman from MMWD mentioned that renters are not benefiting in the long term, I'll tell you, every tax bill I get now, I'm starting to just say, can I still afford to live in Marin County because of that tax bill? So I'd like you to use your office and influence to project to MMWD the concerns that the people of San Rafael have. Thank you.
And thanks for providing your concerns. Anyone else?
Bill Pratt, San Rafael. And I'm approaching this on the position of a fixed-income retiree. I've already seen my property tax bill almost double in eight years, from $8,000 to $15,000. Bond issues, Water District bill has more than doubled since two years ago, and they proposed pay-go. Pay-go, you pay and then you go, because we can't afford these kinds of blank checks that they're asking us to give them. If I was a bondholder, they would tell me exactly where that money was going, not into a black hole. And that's exactly what this is, is a black hole, take the money and run, and it'd be damned, you know, we've got our house in order, but not the homeowners', their house isn't in order anymore. You've taken their money and padded your pockets. This is not a fair and equitable situation, and it needs to be addressed by you people. Thank you.
And thanks for your comments. Anyone else? In which case, I'll ask, if you would, please come back up and perhaps talk about the comments on the water bill versus property tax. That seems to be a fairly common theme, and then whether or not the funds are, in fact, earmarked, set aside for capital improvements.
Sure, on the earmarking, the board has expressed interest to maintain. I mentioned the Community Advisory Committee that was convened. They've expressed interest to have that committee continue to provide oversight and recommendations to the board going forward, as to not just how the money's being spent, but is that the appropriate amount? And that we're gonna touch on at tomorrow night's board meeting as well. The, there was a comment I did want to touch on, that fire lines are not part of this fee program. The reason for that is, fire lines, fortunately, fire lines are dedicated lines to commercial industrial buildings. Fortunately, they don't exert a demand on the system, except in the very, very rare case when there's a brief interior fire, of course, to save life and property. So they're also excluded from connection fees and other similar fees. The residential sprinklers was mentioned, and the board has asked, and staff is bringing a proposal to look at residential meters that have been upsized for non-consumption purposes, such as fire sprinklers, to look at ways to address that, and staff is bringing a recommendation to the board on that Tuesday night. So we are listening to the public and trying to address the issues that come up as we can. And the comments you asked in regards to the property tax or the bi-monthly fee, I've heard you, I know Armando has, and that item's also gonna be talked about tomorrow night at the board.
And thanks for that. We hope that the public input that you received this evening from us, and certainly from the public, has been helpful. You have a significant task ahead of yourselves, which affected all of us. And it's easy, quite frankly, to put this type of thing, the CPI, aside, the capital improvements, aside, and then all of a sudden, you're in a crisis mode. So I'm pleased, I think it's safe to say, we as a community are pleased that you're addressing this now before we reach that point. So thank you for that, and thanks for taking consideration our comments.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll move on to the next item, which is 6A. No, I think we'll conclude with that, thank you. 6A is upper 400, upper TOYA, and we've had, I've had, city managers had some discussions with regard to this item with the attorney that represents the property owner. And I ask that this be tabled until our next meeting, when hopefully, presumably, we'll be able to resolve the matter, if you would.
Do you need a motion on that? I move then that we postpone this item.
Second.
Move in second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Collins.
Hi.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Hi.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Hi.
Mayor Phillips.
By the matter, carries five zero, then turn to the next flavored tobacco product ban, that is item B, and welcome, Ethan.
Thank you. I'm Ethan Guy, I'm with the Community Development Department. So today, we're talking about an informational report on a potential flavored tobacco ban. We're not actually voting on a draft ordinance, rather, just an informational report. So where this came about started in 1999 with an ordinance creating our tobacco retailer license. In 2003, we revised that tobacco retailer license to include a definition for a significant tobacco retailer. A significant tobacco retailer is a business that devotes over 20% of their display area to tobacco sales, or has 75% of their gross receipts coming from tobacco sales. The big change with the significant tobacco retailer is that that ordinance prohibits tobacco, significant tobacco retailers from being in 1,000 feet of a designated space frequented by youth and families. So that includes schools, churches, movie theaters, that sort of thing. In 2012, council amended our smoking ordinance to also include enhancements for outdoor and indoor air regulations. And then in 2016, council further amended that smoking ordinance to prohibit public e-cigarette use, eliminating smoking exemptions for downtown, and adding pedestrian-friendly signage downtown. In county-wide jurisdictions, there have been several tobacco bans that have come through over the last few years. County of Marin most recently passed an ordinance in November, and then smaller jurisdictions nearby have also put forth both flavored tobacco bans and pharmacy tobacco retail bans. I'll get into a little bit of a difference between the flavored tobacco bans in a sec. What a pharmacy tobacco retail ban is, it essentially bans all tobacco sales in pharmacies. So that would be Rite-Aids, Walgreens, CVSs. At the state and federal level, statewide right now, there's currently SB 38 and AB 739, which are being, which are under consideration. The California legislation prohibits retail stores and venue machines from selling flavored tobacco products, which include nicotine cartridges. SB 38 currently has been approved into Health Committee, and is set for the appropriations. Committee on their hearing on April 22nd. AB 739 has been introduced to the floor, but has not been assigned to a committee. Federally, there's been the SB 655 and its companion bill, HR 1498, which is the Stop Appealing Flavors in E-Cigarettes for Kids Act, Save Kids Act. What's different about this is that it provides a year-long ability for e-cigarette manufacturers to prove that their flavors meet one of three criteria, that they help adults quit smoking cigarettes, do not increase youth initiation of nicotine or tobacco products, and do not increase the risk or harm to the person using the flavor. So in the House, that's been introduced as of March 5th, and has been referred to the House Committee on Energy and Commerce. At the Senate level, it was introduced in 2018 and referred to the Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions Committee, but no action was taken, and at the same time as the House bill was then reintroduced this year. How we have kind of framed the issue of a flavored tobacco ban, one of the main organizations, the American Lung Association, puts out their annual statement of tobacco control for California. San Rafael, we score an A right now. Overall, we have a grade of 12 out of 12, so that's something that we can definitely be proud of. And then in each of their individual categories, we score fairly highly. A flavored tobacco ban is one of their emerging issues, so it's not included within that rating, but you can get bonus points if you do pass a flavored tobacco ban. Where we currently have our tobacco retailer license, this is as of December 31st, 2018, we have 54. The, the little circles that you're seeing, in the middle are the schools. The red circle is 1,000 feet from the school. The orange circle is 1,500 feet, and then the lighter tan circle is 2,000 feet from the school. And so to kind of see the general distribution, they're mostly, mostly through downtown. There are a few tobacco retailers that fall within that 1,000-foot school zone. Most of the reasons behind those is that they've been grandfathered into their license. So they either were approved for that license prior to, or they, they had a tobacco retailer since prior to a school going in, or they were already selling tobacco before the tobacco sales. So part of where most of these flavored tobacco bans are coming from is mostly youth, use of tobacco. So for 2018, this is for the San Rafael City School District, lifetime use, so this is if you've ever used cigarettes or ever used e-cigarettes, we're seeing quite substantial increases in youth tobacco use. So in 2018, three to five times more youth are using e-cigarettes versus cigarettes. So for the question, have you ever smoked a whole cigarette? Seventh graders indicated about 7% had smoked a whole cigarette compared to e-cigarettes. That same group said 17%. For tobacco current use, so the question here is, in the last month, have you used either a cigarette or an e-cigarette? From the school year 15, 16, that should say 66%, but there was a 66% decrease amongst ninth graders and 11th graders having used cigarette, having, have smoked a cigarette in the last month. Whereas in that same time span, this is from school year 15, 16 to 17, 18, there was a 400% increase among ninth graders and 175% increase amongst 11th graders having used Now, there are some reasons outside of enjoyment of e-cigarettes for the use of e-cigarettes, and that mostly has to do with smoking cessation. From the CDC, e-cigarettes are not approved by the FDA for smoking cessation, but are used more frequently than FDA-approved smoking cessation aids by individuals trying to quit. E-cigarettes are not approved for, are not safe for youth, young adults, pregnant women, or adults who do not currently use tobacco products. E-cigarettes have the potential to benefit adult smokers who are not pregnant if used as a complete substitute for regular cigarettes, however. Only a few studies with mixed results on the effectiveness of e-cigarettes as a long-term smoking cessation tool. So there's, there are studies, but it's, it's somewhat mixed. So what we're here today asking for is to consider potential amendments to the San Rafael Municipal Code 8.15. Changes that would go, part of these amendments would be if the council wanted to consider a flavored tobacco ban, as well as, that second one should actually say, a pharmacy ban. But that flavored tobacco ban, to do that, you would need to define something as a characterizing flavor. A characterizing flavor is anything that's added to a tobacco or nicotine product so that it no longer tastes like tobacco. So that would include menthol cigarettes, that would include additional flavors that might be added to e-cigarette vaping liquids. Additionally, it would require the addition of a new section of the SRMC that would specifically call out that ban for the sale of flavored tobacco. If the council decided wanting to do a pharmacy tobacco ban, they would, we would need to define pharmacy within that section of the SRMC, and then additionally include a section prohibiting the sale of tobacco use, or tobacco sale. So to recap, our recommended action is to accept the report regarding this draft ordinance and to provide staff direction. The four options that we've outlined are direct staff return with draft ordinance as written, to have us return with changes to that draft ordinance, to return with more information, and then finally, we could also take no action.
First, thanks for your report. Your reports are excellent, and this is another example. I really do appreciate the way you, you present this. So thank you for that. Comments? Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine. Anyway, I'm just trying to get. Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Ethan. I agree with the mayor. That was a great report. Actually, two questions. You make a point of talking about the significant tobacco retailer, but we don't have any of those, do we? By that definition, which was 75% of their business is tobacco products?
Yes, we do. We have, I believe, the mighty Quinn qualifies as significant tobacco retailer, and there's also a discount cigarette store in the West End.
Okay. That's right. And then the other question is, who would do, if we decide in our conversation and after hearing from the community that we want to proceed, who does the enforcement of, both of them? So one's a flavored tobacco ban, and one's a pharmacy ban. Who does the enforcement of that?
So since these changes would occur to our tobacco retail license ordinance, the enforcement would be carried out through the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department currently has an MOU with the city to enforce verification and making sure that stores are not selling, and it would fall under that umbrella.
So the cities that have already passed bans, I think Nevada was up there, another big city, so the sheriff will be going into the gas station, or do they do like decoy operations the way they do with alcohol? Like, I just, I don't understand what that looks like.
Yeah. And I, I see a few members from the county here, so they, they might be able to answer more specifics about that enforcement as well. From my understanding, the Sheriff's Department goes in at least once a year to check to make sure they're not selling, what their, their sales are regarding, I'm not sure if there's stings. What has been passed on to me from the county is that over the last, over the next three years, they have received additional funding from the Department of Justice to increase their enforcement.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Which case that's open for? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. Jim, please.
Quick on the gavel. Trying to get past me, and it's not going to happen. First of all, most everybody knows my take on smoking in general. I'm not a supporter of it or proponent of it, and I kind of led the thing on, to get the e-cigarette ban on downtown and outside. So, but I, but I look at ordinances like this and what's being requested of us, and I have to question, is this the lane that we want to be in as a city? Especially when you noted, and I, in my research noted, that there is, there is significant legislation, both on the state and federal level, to, to ban these, ban the usage of this. And us putting an ordinance in place in a local municipality, I, I just don't see that it's going to be worth anything. And I'm looking for someone to tell me how this is going to impact a youth's ability or, or availability to get access to these things when you can go online, order it, you can go to a neighboring jurisdiction that doesn't have a ban and buy it. And correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm not being facetious here, it's currently illegal for minors to purchase flavored cigarettes, flavored tobacco, flavored vaping products, all that, correct?
Yeah, the, the legal purchasing age is 21. Illegal purchasing age is 21. So we're, we're saying that we want to do this to help decrease the amount, one of the largest reasons behind this is what I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we want to decrease the ability for youths to gain access to these products because that'll, you know, we've seen these large increases, 400% increases in, in youth since e-cigarettes came online. It's still illegal for them to buy those, so how are they getting them? Yeah. So one quick clarification, that 400% increase is over the last school year.
Sure.
Yeah. The, the, the top three reasons that have been listed by the FDA as to how students and how youth are getting access to e-cigarettes, 33% of respondents to a national survey responded that their parents purchased them for them. And the main reason behind that is the parents believed that e-cigarettes were not as harmful or were not harmful compared to cigarettes. So it is online sales, but there is also a level of adults purchasing for children.
So in a previous council meeting, we approved the delivery and distribution of recreational adult-use marijuana within our city limits. And so to take this to the next logical step, if 33% of the people out there are buying e-cigarettes for their kids, could they not just turn around and buy from our delivery services that we've approved in the city of San Rafael marijuana for their kids because that's illegal as well? I mean, I, I know this sounds a little bit out there, but I, I think when we're doing stuff like this, that it's really stepping outside of the lane of what we're charged with as a city. And if the federal government wants to ban it, and if the state government wants to ban it, then I'm happy to follow those rules. But this, this is just something I, and again, I'll, I'll have comments later on, but my question to you is that, how is this going to prevent the youth from getting access to these, when it is a perfectly legal product on both the federal and state level currently? Whereas marijuana is legal in the state of California, but is still a federally controlled substance, and yet still being accessed. So I want someone to explain to me how this ordinance will actually prevent these products from getting in the hands of youths.
One, one big distinction between recreational cannabis and flavored tobacco, especially vaping products, would be the introduction of a characterizing flavor. And that is ultimately one of the, the major points that the FDA has found to see that increase in youth tobacco use. That characterizing flavor would be the addition of flavors like mango, kiwi, something that takes away from that taste. I, I'm not working on the recreational cannabis ordinance, like, I can't speak directly to that, but in most cases, those products do not include a characterizing flavor.
It has a characterizing flavor of its own, which I think we would all agree as we, as we walk around. And again, I'm not trying to make light of this because I, I, I don't think these products are helpful for anybody to, to smoke, and I, and I kind of wish that they weren't there. But again, I think whether we're overstepping, and I'll allow others to, to speak, that when we discuss of things where we should best put forth our resources and time and effort as a city, th, these things are better left to the, the state and federal government, and if they choose to do that. So that's, that's the questions that I have. Jim, it looks like you want to do.
I just wanted to add one real quick thing as an answer to the last question, is that you had asked how it's going to reduce, and I think the, the simplest answer is just it's going to reduce the amount of places you could buy in San Rafael. So if San Rafael considers this to be an important health issue, and that's up to the council to decide, there's only a limited number of things that you could do about it, and one of those things is make sure that it's not sold within San Rafael. So could you buy it somewhere else? Yes, but your authority is restricted to the city of San Rafael in, in terms of this particular issue.
But you can still buy it online, correct? And you can still travel and buy it, and there's no prohibited matter for that. So if, if people want it, if it's a commodity that people want to buy, whether or not it's available next door, or available online, delivered to their doorstep, is, is that. So we're anticipating that we will see a decrease in youth participating in flavored tobacco products by us putting this restriction on being able to sell it. And I guess that's just a difference of opinion of how I feel that that'll happen. Okay, thanks.
Okay, did you? Okay. Well, I have a comment at the end. So let's open to public, pardon me. So we're interested in your input. Please come, come forward. Not all at once now. Okay.
I noticed that we started, it's my first time. It's my first time, and I noticed that when we started, we started with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think we're all proud to live in a free country.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Barry Nella.
I should have made that clear. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And I think we're all proud to live in a free country. And when I see, you know, personal freedoms being inhibited, you know, especially for me, and how it impacts me and people that I know and love that have quit smoking. My mother died from cancer, my grandfather died from cancer, and I've seen a lot of people die from lung cancer. And I know that this has helped thousands of people in this community alone leave cigarettes. Being forced back to a tobacco flavor, which is really what the ban is doing, nobody is stopping e-cigarette tobacco flavors, but forcing all the people that have quit smoking in their 40s, 50s, 60s, and 70 years of age that are using these, right? Doesn't seem logical to me. And then when I see it on the pretense of because the kids are breaking the law, right? To me, that seems like, where am I living now? Where am I living where my freedoms, my friends, people I love's freedoms are being inhibited because parents, 33% of them are buying them for their children? And, you know, the kids could go right on the internet with a cellphone and a debit card and order all that they want, but the people that are older that aren't internet-savvy maybe can't drive to Santa Rosa to get them, or, or maybe they can't order online or whatever. The people that really need this to quit smoking and to keep quit smoking, right? Their access is being taken away by children that are breaking the law. I grew up, I broke the law as a child, right? And nobody stopped alcohol sales because I was out in front asking people to buy me beer as a kid, right? Was that my time up?
Yes. To summarize your comment.
I didn't know that happened. Anyways, I'm glad I was able to talk, and I just, I'm very passionate that it's helping the people in this community, and I think that, you know, I wanted to raise my issue. Thank you.
And, and thank you for your comments. And perhaps for others, if you'd introduce yourself with your name, because we're on, on tape, not to excite anybody, but we're on tape. And then also, yes, we limit comments to three minutes.
Sure. Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Stefan D. Doug, and I am with THR Policy. We educate on the subject of tobacco harm reduction and vapor products in particular. Minors should not vape. I think we all agree on this, but this policy will not accomplish the intended goals. There are better ways to prevent youth access, and we encourage the city to have that conversation with us and work together on more successful and long-term solutions. The proposed prohibition on the sales of flavored vapor products sends the message to adult smokers that they should continue a deadly habit because the city denies them access to a life-saving technology that has worked for millions of Americans. It tells former smokers who now vape that the city prefers they start buying cigarettes again, because after all, this policy would ensure that deadly combustible cigarettes will remain available in the city, while scientifically proven safer alternatives will not. Having looked at the analysis you've been provided, there are several problems that immediately stand out and may not be very obvious to you and would lead to potentially costly unintended consequences for both the city and affected small businesses. One example is that the proposed changes to the TRL will suddenly consider VIP, a business on Second Street, to be a tobacco retailer, yet their location is zoned to prohibit tobacco retail. The current TRL does not define VIP as a tobacco retailer due to both floor space and revenue definitions. VIP also happens to be an adult-only establishment where it's impossible for minors to obtain flavored vapor products, yet I don't see any mention in the analysis to exempt such establishments, which the vast majority of other municipalities in the state have included as part of enacting ordinances like this. So I respectfully ask the council to put this proposal on hold and allow us time to meet with any of you and your staff to work on this policy and avoid any of these unintended consequences, while helping the city ensure that minors will not, will not obtain any flavored tobacco products from retailers in this city. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Next. Question. Next person, please.
Hi, my name is David LaCine. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council for considering this and for the opportunity to speak. I've worked with homeless people and people struggling with mental health issues for the last four or five years, and I'm currently starting a program called EveryVeteran.org where we help struggling veterans here in Marin. And I just want us to take a moment and realize not every adult in Marin has access to the internet, or a debit card, or a cellphone. And I can just tell you, working with struggling populations, both my parents smoke, I'm a hundred percent against youth vaping and youth tobacco use, but for really struggling-at-risk adults, nicotine can be so calming and reassuring and get them over tough times, and I've just, I just want us to carefully consider that this is what we do in a community, we're always balancing individual rights of adults with protecting the community. And I can just tell you, my clients have purposely patronized quite consistently, even though their prices are considerably higher, they'll go to VIP because they don't sell liquor. So there's a little island in the county where they can get that reassuring, calming effect from nicotine and not be tempted to buy a bottle of vodka or a forty-ounce Colt malt liquor. So I would just, all of us, there's a place here for us to carefully consider what we're doing and the unintended consequences of what we're doing. And I'd just like to remind all of us that people suffering from mental illness and people are homeless and having a hard time, they have a right to purchase legal products. So thank you for your time.
And thank you. Next person, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. My name is Hymer Rohas, I'm with the National Association Tobacco Outlets. Our national association represents local retailers that sell tobacco products throughout the United States, including here in the city of San Rafael. The majority of our membership is made up of small business owners. Our business owners, as stated earlier, are against selling all tobacco products to anyone under the age of twenty-one. As was stated earlier, it's illegal in the state of California as of two years ago. Retailers are the last line of defense to stop youth from accessing all tobacco products by doing a few of these things: checking all customer IDs, those who want to buy tobacco, the use of electronic ID verification systems, and/or constant education to its employees on how to check IDs, placing of all tobacco products are away from public access and behind the counters, only accessible to employees. So much of that, so much so that from January 2017 to January 29 in a two-year period, the FDA sting operations here in the city of San Rafael has been a hundred percent compliant, meaning no retailers have sold to anyone under the age of twenty-one. So retailers here in your city do not sell to youth. The American Lung Association has recently given you a grade A. That grade A could not have been achieved without the City Council, the community and business sectors all in harmony and agreeing with this. In reading the staff report, the survey that is quoted by the school survey system, tobacco used by San Rafael high school students, dropped by thirty percent by the time they were seniors. This is mostly due to the education outreach conducted in the junior and senior years on the harmful effects of tobacco use. Education works. This month, the San Francisco Commission on Small Business had an initial report on the impacts of its flavor ordinance. Here are some of their findings. Thirteen point one percent of San Francisco use smoke often, which they came out with a number of a hundred and forty-seven students in the city of San Francisco. Eighty-six percent of those hundred and forty-seven students that smoke obtained tobacco products in San Francisco by one of three ways: friends, other social sources, and all-on sales, not by local retailers. So we ask duly asked with respect to hold on to the issue at hand, wait to what the state and the FDA does, and direct also the staff for an economic impact report that includes sales tax loss and fiscal impact to business. Thank you for your consideration.
And thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca with-
Drop the mic down just a little bit if you would, please. Thank you.
My name is Rebecca, I'm the buyer for VIP vape store. First, can I present you guys with some info?
If you would give it to City Clerk.
Yeah. So on the top there is a study from the Royal College of Physicians, and some of the things that are noted in there is that vaping cannot cause five percent of the harm that smoking cigarettes does, it doesn't have the same danger of secondhand smoke, and it's ninety-three percent healthier than smoking cigarettes. It's really important that adults be able to access that while being able to figure out what's right for them to help them switch and stay switched off of cigarettes and to keep the separation from cigarettes. I know myself, I felt a lot better smoking cigarettes. Aside from that, inside of the binder is all of our customer statements on what vaping has done for them and why having a flavor other than tobacco is important to them, what it means to them and their families, how long the citizens of San Rafael have been cigarette-free and using those flavors is also incorporated in there. And then I, as the buyer of VIP, have taken a lot of measures to get rid of products that appeal to kids, products that are labeled after children things. So I would just like if you guys would give us an honest opportunity to work with you guys and combat this problem before, you know, and let the Fed laws go through. Thank you.
And thank you. Next person.
Good evening. My name is Elena. I'm a sales associate at VIP San Rafael vape store, and I just wanted to talk about the ingredients that are in the vape juice, which is vegetable glycerin, flavoring, propylene, glycol, water, and the consumer's choice of nicotine. I also wanted to say that vape juice is ninety-three percent safer for the body, and it doesn't contain any of the rumored ingredients, simply the ones that I've just listed. I also wanted to say that vaping has personally helped me to remove tobacco, certain tobacco products from my life, like backwoods and swishers and also cigarettes, and thank you for your time.
And thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Tamara Wise. I am a floor manager at VIP in San Rafael. One of my jobs, I'm in charge of training our staff. One of them is definitely carding, making sure that no minors either enter our shop or try to purchase from us. We've also ordered new scanners that scan not only out-of-state but California IDs. We've also trained the staff on looking, really taking their time at every ID, carding anybody that looks under, God, thirty-five. Also, I was a smoker for, God, seventeen years, pack, pack and a half a day, and vaping helped me quit smoking. I was very successful with it, and I tried everything. So I really hope this doesn't pass, or we can figure out a middle ground to where you're not taking choices away from people that are legal to buy it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jesse, and I am just a patron of vape juice, and I just want to say that being someone who works in the treatment community, having been sober myself, I know what is important for people to put in their bodies, and for a long time, cigarettes was the main source of nicotine for a lot of people suffering with other addictions. And what I've seen working in the treatment community as well with the public, that a lot of those people have switched over to vape juice and to vape products, which has helped out a lot. I know I have a heart condition, I switched from smoking years ago, and I see a cardiologist, and he proves that this is much healthier for me. There are studies that say that, as we can see, ninety-three percent of findings have found that this is safer than actual smoking cigarettes. So I just wanted to say, we are letting people that are breaking the law, like kids and parents that buy these for their kids, determine what the law is going to be, rather than adults trying to find a way that makes this work for everybody. And so we're just trying to find a way that works and where our rights aren't infringed on. So thank you.
And thank you. Anybody else?
Dave Bonfilio, resident of San Rafael, and I quit smoking cold turkey, so I know how difficult it is. I want to address the pharmacy ban first. Take the lead from CVS and Rite Aid. Rite Aid just made the announcement, they're going to eliminate tobacco within the next ninety days. CVS has already done it, and CVS is also funding a program to make two hundred, help two hundred universities become tobacco-free. So they're in the health business, and they're leading the way. As far as flavored tobacco, the tobacco industry has targeted the LBGTQ, the black community, and the Hispanic community with menthol and mint-flavored cigarettes for years. If you see the movie Beale Street, which is based on the James Baldwin movie, when the characters in that movie smoke, and they smoke throughout the movie, you'll notice they're using menthol cigarettes. So it is a tactic of the tobacco industry to entice people to use the product. I do believe that we should eliminate all flavored tobacco products, period. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Now, oh, we have one more, an additional.
My name is Bianca Vasquez, as a member of the LGBTQ community. It's not, like, affecting us like that. We, no one wants to sell to kids, we get it. It's in the home, that's really it. I kind of can compare this to foster sister. You're not changing anything, you're just pushing it out somewhere where you can't really control it.
Okay, thank you. So you preserved your last place.
All right, my name, thank you, appreciate the time. My name is Eddie Walsh, just wanted to say thank you to the council members and Mayor. I own a business called Walsh &amp; Reimer LLC in Padilla, California, and we are manufacturers of vape e-liquid. We started doing this about six years ago as a hobby, because my mom was diagnosed with lung cancer. So I was like, well, I gotta try to find something to help her. So she started vaping, they managed to catch it early enough that where they controlled it, and she now vapes, and she's doing okay. Also, I wanted to say that our products are not marketed towards children. There were several shops in the past who I found out were selling to minors, and we pulled our product from their shops, and we blacklisted them. We will not sell to minors, I do not approve of it whatsoever. We just want our products to be in the hands of responsible adults and have a safer alternative. Like the Royal College of Physicians stated just last year, that it is more than ninety-three percent less harmful than traditional combustible cigarettes. They actually, in England, they promote the use of vaping for adults, and their doctors prescribe them for their patients, because it's much more effective than the patch, the lozenges or the gum. The success rate to those are very, very low, and with vaping, it's helped millions of people quit. This goes much more beyond save the children, this has a lot to do with Big Pharma being very upset at our industry for taking away billions of dollars of their cessation programs that don't have a high success rate, like I just said. And so thank you for listening to me, and I hope you guys can consider this, not putting this ban through and meeting with us and discussing ways that we can make this work for both of us.
Let me ask you a question, Mike.
Yeah.
What if, what if vaping was prescribed by a doctor?
Well, that would be considered a cessation product, like Chantix or something like that. To be in that category, we would have to be, I guess, a medical aide, which we would have, which basically the FDA is making us, our industry, by 2022, because we're considered a smaller business with less than a hundred and thirty employees, I believe, is the cutoff number, that per each SKU of our product, they want to charge us between one and two million dollars to go through a review of tests that no longer, that doesn't guarantee we'll pass. It's basically playing the lottery with the FDA. So up until then, we're hoping that they end up changing some laws and kind of follow suit to what the UK has been doing, which seems to be ultra-successful. And, you know, with Gottlieb leaving the FDA, there's kind of been, you know, not really sure what they're doing. They say they're going to stick to what Gottlieb's plan was, but nothing's changed so far, so we're kind of in limbo until the 2022 effect for small businesses like myself. And we supply to VIP, we don't sell to any other shop or tobacco store here, because we know that they're responsible, and we've been dealing with them for the past five years. We haven't had one issue, and from what they told me, they haven't had any issues of selling to minors with nine sting operations, was it? Nine sting operations, they passed them all with flying colors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm assuming, no, wrong assumption. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Pam Granger, I'm the Chair of the Smoke Free Marin Coalition. The coalition hardly supports the proposed amendments to Chapter 815 in both cases. Alarmed by the exponential increase in youth smoking, vaping products, communities throughout the state, including the county and five other jurisdictions, right here in Marin, have taken a stand against big tobacco. Back in 2009, that's ten years ago, we've been waiting, the Family Smoking and Prevention Act prohibited the sale of cigarettes with characterizing flavors. The big tobacco company responded, they're very nimble, they have produced, young high school boys are smoking small cigars, flavored cigars, at a higher rate than cigarettes, and of course, e-cigarettes, a higher rate than that. We talked about flavors and how big they are. Recent years, there's been an explosion of sweet-flavored tobacco products that stand to undermine all the work that we have done since 1995 in tobacco control. The sweet products have fueled the popularity of e-cigarettes, and we've already seen statistics on the rate of use amongst all of our kids. Certainly, it might be said that electronic smoking devices are less harmful than a combustible cigarette. Less harmful is not necessarily safe. If they wanted to be approved as a cessation aide, they could, as the last gentleman say, apply to the FDA for so. So tobacco companies have a long history of developing and marketing flavored tobacco products as starter products that attract kids. They are indeed losing customer base, and so they have marketed, like buying Juul, thirty-five cents, thirty-five percent of a electronic vaping company. They're not giving up. I've got more in a letter, I'll just leave-
Can I ask you one question?
Certainly, Gary, good to see you.
Why do you suppose there aren't more from our community out this evening advocating the same as you have?
Because this was billed as an exploratory thing. So as a consequence, we were waiting until there was something, by the way, the something that, in the draft, it says, under the age of eighteen, and I know you know it's gone to twenty-one. So that was it. We've got children, we've got parents, we've got the Marin Office of Education, so there's tons of us, but we didn't perceive that this was that particular meeting, so.
On the contrary, this is probably the right time.
Yes, well, that's why I'm here.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Now, oh, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Bob Curry, and I'm the coordinator of the tobacco program here in Marin County. And as you know, I'm not up here to lobby one way or the other, but there were a few things and questions that came up that I just had to, I wanted to speak on. You know, this whole thing on the vaping is something very disturbing to all of us who've been in tobacco control for many years. I've got over twenty-five years of my vocation has been to try and, you know, just protect-
My name is Bob Curry, and I'm the Coordinator of the Tobacco Program here in Marin County. And as you know, I'm not up here to lobby one way or the other, but there were a few things and questions that came up that I just had to, I wanted to speak on. You know, this whole thing on the vaping is something very disturbing to all of us who've been in tobacco control for many years. I've got over twenty-five years. My vocation has been to try and, you know, just protect people, but especially youth and youth access to tobacco products. And we've come a long way. Twenty-five years ago, your council really led the way in the state in passing policies that were eventually adopted by the state. And we're hoping the state will move quickly, but as they did twenty-five years ago, it was not as quickly as we had hoped. But the end game, we saw within the next ten or fifteen years that we would have been able to get rid of tobacco products altogether. And then, the tobacco industry with the Philip Morris, they just invested thirteen billion dollars into the vaping industry because they see this is the new way that they're going to addict a whole new generation. And there's millions of our youth across the country who have already been addicted to the nicotine. Just one pod of the Juul product, we thought was pretty bad, that they'll smoke this in a day and a half, or vaping it in a day and a half, that it contained what we thought was the equivalent nicotine of one pack of cigarettes. That was just updated by Stanford, is actually forty-one cigarettes. That's over two packs of cigarettes, the nicotine that they are taking into their bodies. And that is very harmful to the, their developing brain. I have a couple of answers to some questions.
Finish, finish your thoughts if you can.
So there's a question on, you know, is this policy going to really be effective? And policies are part of our overall strategy. Our overall strategy, we pass a policy, we're passing a policy, it doesn't do anything by itself. But as a community, we take a stand. And incidentally, the San Francisco voters did get to decide and vote on Prop B last June on what their city council or their supervisors had enacted with their total flavor ban, exactly what we're asking here tonight. The voters approved that measure, that they had passed, sixty-eight percent of the voters. And so that's why the coalition has, our coalition and many coalitions in the Bay Area have been promoting a policy. But the policy generates education and discussion in the community. The parents start to hear about all the dangers. Those thirty-three percent of the parents, hopefully, with our education that we're doing in addition to asking for policies, we're out there educating parents, we're educating students, and we're hopefully, that number is certainly going to be reduced drastically. And then in the enforcement, we are putting a lot of energies into enforcement. We have been, over the last number of years, going to every tobacco retailer in the county. And that will increase because as Ethan had said, that we have gotten a three-year grant for the county with the sheriff to do additional sting operations. And somebody from Sacramento was up speaking, and they said that there haven't been any stores in San Rafael that have sold tobacco products to our youth. And that is not the facts. Fortunately, our rates have been in the single digits. Because we are constantly out there doing enforcement checks, we're probably some of the best in the state. But unfortunately, some of our retailers see the little fine that they've been getting as, you know, it's something that they can take as something they will pay as long as they continue to sell to minors and making a lot of money, so.
And thanks, thanks for your comments, insightful.
Mr. Mayor, before Bob leaves, there's a question that was asked that staff's not able to answer, and I was hoping maybe Bob has an answer to it, which is the question that came up of, in the Marin jurisdictions, where there's been several that have passed this already, have there been any exceptions for any kind of businesses either that caters only to adults or any other kind of exceptions in Marin so far?
No, no, there hasn't.
I think the question that came up is, you know, and maybe in other jurisdictions there have been, but we haven't seen that in Marin so far, is that?
Not in Marin. We don't have that many significant tobacco retailers. There are a couple up in Nevada, Nevada passed a full ban, which did not at the time include the menthol cigarettes because San Francisco was going through the Proposition E. And so we held off on getting them to go with the menthol cigarettes until we saw how that played out with the public. And as I said, sixty-eight percent of the people supported. So we'll be going back to Nevada. They've got all the other flavor products in their ordinance, but they don't have the menthol cigarettes yet.
Thanks for asking the question, thanks for your response. I'm sorry, Bob.
Well, if you don't mind, Councilmember Gamblin raised an interesting point, and I'm wondering if you might be able to address it. Is there an equivalence, and if there is or isn't, if you can give your sort of thoughts on the fact that we have, we here in San Rafael, that statewide we've legalized adult, medicinal and adult-use recreational marijuana? And we're going through a process of licensing and permitting of the manufacture, sale, distribution of marijuana products here in the city of San Rafael. If at the same time that we're doing that, to respect people's right to purchase marijuana and use it legally, if at the same time we do that, we're also looking to restrict a legal product because we're concerned about the impact on youth smoking or youth usage, how do you square those two? On the one hand, you've got freedom of opportunity to purchase with appropriate controls in place. And on the other hand, we're saying, we're not sure that those controls in place are sufficient, adequate to safeguard our youth, so we're going to put a ban in place on at least a large segment of those products.
Yeah. You know, I am not involved with the marijuana, other than the fact that in your secondhand smoke, you have banned the use or smoking of marijuana in public or any place that other regular tobacco products are not allowed to be used. I do know that there are a couple of coalitions in the community, the Marin Prevention Network and the Coalition Connection, that they have been going to all of the different council meetings, and they are certainly concerned about the youth being able to access tobacco, marijuana products. And so they are really not in favor of, even though it's an illegally adult product, but they don't want the storefront stores to be opened in Marin County to have that access. They feel if adults can get it shipped in or transported in, that is safer for our young people. So maybe that's something we could do with vaping products, have them transported in, but not sold in the county, hopefully.
Thanks. Tough one. Any, anyone else? Even.
Hi, my name is Laura Walsh, and bear with me, I just had shoulder surgery, so you can see this is kind of important to me. I was a two-pack-a-day smoker. My daughter begged me to quit. I tried everything, I tried patches, I tried gums, I tried white knuckling it for years. I tried everything. And then I was out with a friend, and they had this little thing. And I was like, and they were, you know, they looked like they were smoking a cigarette. And I was like, what is that? I'd never heard of it. And I tried it, and it was easy, it made it so easy. And I know they talk about the pods for the Juuls and how much nicotine they have in it. And those are designed, those high-milligram ones, for people like me who are two-pack-a-day smokers and need that high, high amount of nicotine in order to quit. And then it's designed as a step-down process. I'm currently at three milligrams of nicotine, which is significantly less than the fifty milligrams. It's a choice that the customers have. And I think it's important, I tried with tobacco flavors to quit, that didn't work. I ended up quitting actually with a strawberry cotton candy flavor, which I know that a lot of people are anti-candy flavors, but that's what works for, that's what worked for me. And that's what works for so many other people. Because if you're still having the tobacco flavor, I, at least for me and other people I know, we didn't see the incentive to switch when it tastes the same. Because it is still a little bit of a leap because you don't just get addicted to the tobacco and the nicotine, you get addicted to all those chemicals. And that's one of the things that you don't hear about. But you do, you get addicted to all that chemical cocktail that they feed into your body. They don't put those chemicals in there for no reason, they put them in there because it makes it more addictive. And so for me, it made a big difference. And I want other people to have the opportunity that I had in being able to live a healthier, longer life. So, thank you for your time. And on a side note, you can buy mango-flavored beer cannabis. Thanks.
Good evening, council members. My name's Ted Torina. Good seeing you again, Gary Phillips. We first saw each other several years ago at the first homeless meeting to deal with the homeless crisis. My mother ran for city council several years ago, she wasn't as fortunate as all the others. She had a very worthy opponent, she got defeated. She was a wonderful person. I'm one of the proprietaries and the manager of VIP. I'm very proud of my staff, they did a very good job tonight outlining to you the information I think that you need. You know, when I came into this business, I was asked from another friend to help another friend. I said I'd only come into this if it was a high-class store and it really served the community. And that's exactly what it does. I'm very proud of my staff, we're very educationally based. We've had the Santa Fel Police Department come in at least nine times, according to the officer. It was last in there a month ago, we've passed every time. We invested, like one of my staff members, the trainer, in an ID machine that works very well. We could probably get a better one, we bought it three or four years ago, there are better ones, we could spend more money. There's definitely quite a few things we could do to help youth not vape as much. Don't feel like our business should be penalized, or any of your constituents, the adults. We have over fifteen thousand customers, of which over five thousand of those are vapors, and most of them have quit smoking cigarettes because of the things my staff has taught them. You know, we all want to help the kids, don't think the flavor ban is the best way to do it. I'm going to come in tomorrow with a staff member and another expert and set up a meeting with one of your staffers to go over some additional options, I think that would be helpful. Thank you for your consideration, very much.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Well, I can see individual situations, perhaps those cited this evening, the benefit from, in this case, the vaping that you've discussed. The back of my mind, I'm wondering how many, how many more individuals, particularly youth, are going to be enticed into, starting with the products we're talking about tonight, and therefore have to go through the cycle of now relieving themselves of that addiction? I mean, are we going to net out if we say no, and we're going to still have some that will, versus allowing more to use it that'll have to go through the cycle?
Well, that's a great question, Mayor. I would say that if we banned flavored vaping, that the youth, instead of picking up vaping, which some would, they would smoke cigarettes, which is a much less healthy alternative.
At the same degree?
Pardon?
The same degree, the same numbers?
I can't answer.
How would you conclude that?
I don't, I can't honestly answer whether it'd be the same numbers. I can only say that the decrease in tobacco use is way, way down. It was commented earlier that big tobacco's investing in the vape business. Yes, they are, they didn't used to, when it first came out, they were fighting a tooth and nails. They're investing money now because they are starting to see the benefits and realize it's an international thing that people prefer over smoking cigarettes. That's why they're jumping into it.
But perhaps the reduction in usage of cigarettes is a result of some of the provisions here in San Rafael and perhaps elsewhere that have discouraged that initial encounter?
Yes, and, you know, there, you know, our store also, anything we can, any products we can find to benefit the well-being, the happiness of our customers is exactly what we look for. You know, we have an opiate crisis going on, so we, you know, we brought in some health and wellness products, our newest line. So, you know, we started as an adult store, but we've expanded into items that serve the community, serve our customers, are healthier, better alternatives, and vaping is definitely one of them.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Once again, anybody else? See, no one will close and come back for a comment and direction of the staff on this agenda item. Andrew, please.
I've just got a couple of comments or questions for staff. I'm torn between what is very compelling about what's being proposed, which is, can we, if the goal here, if the objective, leaving aside the pharmacy issue for the moment, if the goal is to address the issue of youth, youth use of nicotine or tobacco, nicotine products, how do we reduce that usage? That I'd like if there's any data out there on similar bans elsewhere and the effect it's had on the youth consumption of nicotine products. That would help me. So for example, just in a quick online search during this issue, I see that in Maine, about ten years ago or longer, a similar ban was put in place for the entire state of Maine. Have they seen a falloff in youth usage of nicotine products? San Francisco, it's probably too soon to tell. But there are other, the city of Chicago did a ban and restricted the sale of flavored tobacco products within five hundred feet of schools. Has there been, that was about five years ago, any data, has any data emerged from that ban or similar bans elsewhere that would tell us that this kind of ban would have the desired effect? Because if it doesn't have the desired effect, if there isn't real evidence to tell us that, then I'm a little concerned that we're talking out of both sides of our mouth. And my question, which comes from John Gamblin's comment, sort of betrays that. Here we are, extolling the virtues of licensing, I shouldn't say extolling the virtues, that's a little strong, but we're blessing the sale and distribution of marijuana-based products because it's been legalized in the state of California, and we know there are adults who would like to use it. And at the same time, we expect that controls will be in place to prevent youth consumption of those marijuana products. Why do we hold tobacco-related or nicotine-related products to a different standard? So I'm a little concerned about that, and to the extent we can address that, if this matter comes back to us, I'd like a full discussion on that issue. So data elsewhere. And then I'm interested in the exempting adult-only institutions. So if we're confident that, or if the goal here is to restrict access by youth and we limit it to adult-only, then we're dealing with the education side, which has been brought up by several people today. That is, educating adults not to share with their children vaping products so that we really get to the heart of the problem here. Because if adults can get to this stuff and buy it online, whatever, then we haven't solved the problem with the proposed tobacco flavor ban.
Good question, thank you. Mary?
I don't have a question, are we ready for comments?
Yes, please.
Comments? I believe that we should bring ourselves in line with our neighbors. And I support the ban on flavored tobacco and the sale of tobacco in pharmacies. I'd like to, my recommendation would be that we have the staff bring back the proposed ordinances largely as written, to the extent that additional data supporting the proposals can be located, that would be great. But I'm in favor of the draft as proper request.
And thanks for clear direction, Mary, I mean, Kate?
Thank you. Well, thank you for everyone who came down this evening and shared your stories of both your personal issues of addiction, as well as with your family members. And they are compelling, and I thought Mayor, the Mayor's question about, you know, as adults, you're struggling with addiction, and I was thinking the same thing. Well, if youth, if you hadn't had the access to it, maybe it would have been a different story that you ended up having in your life. So I'm kind of grappling with that. And the discussion reminded me of what we had a couple of years ago, and we talked about adding e-cigarettes and vaping to our smoking policy. And that night, there were actually a lot of people in the room, and we spent a lot of time, we started talking about the health effects, and we all looked at each other, and we don't have the qualifications. So for me, I felt I'm not having Dr. So for me, I felt, I'm not having Dr. Willis here, I really would like him to weigh in. I mean, he's our Public Health Officer of Marin County. Some of the health part, I'm not the expert there, and I would, I would like to hear what he has to say about the youth access, because there's two, I don't want to say competing, but there are two different issues. One is restricting the youth access, and the other is having a product for adults that has absolutely worked for them and had positive results. So like Andrew just said, is there a way to have a carve-out for VIP? I mean, obviously, you guys showed up and talked about it. According to what you said, there are two other businesses here that would also fall into it. I believe in when you talk about checking IDs, I actually, and this is off the top of my head, but I'm thinking if I went to a service station, they might not have that same level of control. So I think rewarding those businesses that really understand and do reduce the access. I think we can get creative about it. You know, I don't know if it'll hurt our A grade that we get from the tobacco industry, but I think it does reflect what we're trying to do here in terms of supporting small businesses and what adults want. And I do believe reducing access will reduce youth use of it. We've seen that in terms of what RX Safe Marin, it's not exactly like, but they reduced the opium, opiates reduction availability, and the numbers went down. To the one thing about the cannabis comment, to me, those are storefronts. That's a different thing. So I actually don't have that same tension between those two things, because delivery is different than storefronts. So it would be different if we were talking about cannabis storefronts, which right now we are not. So for me, I guess in closing, interested in a carve-out, how we could make that work, and then having Dr. Willis come, which I know he's hard to get here, and I appreciate both Bob and Pam coming down as well, but I know when he came before, he did have some of the data that Andrew recommended.
Good comment. John?
Again, thank you for, thanks for the board, and thank you for everybody that showed up and gave us your comments. We really appreciate that. You know, from a personal standpoint, you know, I watched my dad smoke from the day I was born until the day he died much too early, and it's still tough for me to deal with that. So I'm definitely not here supporting tobacco use or anything that is an addictive form in the sense of vaping, and like I said, but it's not my role to dictate what an adult can do in their personal life if it doesn't impact me. You know, we passed the ordinance in, to add vaping to our other smoking ordinance because that impacted others that didn't have that choice in terms of second-hand smoke. When you're walking down Fourth Street and you're walking behind a cloud and someone of vape, that's not your choice anymore. So we put that ordinance in place because it was protecting our citizens from something that they had no control over. In this case, what we're being asked to do is ban a legally-approved product from the use of adults who are old enough to make the choice on what they want to do with their bodies. If they want to smoke, and they want to get cancer, and they want to die, that's not my choice. That's their choice. If they want to vape because it helps them stop smoking, that might help them prevent getting cancer, I don't know that's a fact. As Kate said, we are not medical professionals up here. I don't have the anecdotal evidence that says it's going to work or not work, but I'm not going to tell somebody that they can't do that if it's perfectly legal. If the federal government wants to come down and ban this product altogether, if the state government wants to come down and ban this product altogether, then we'll have a ban on the product and it won't be sold. And that is, that is something that I believe should be left to the federal and state government. I know a representative from the county had said that, you know, San Rafael took the lead in issuing policies and ordinances early on that were then adapted or brought up to the state level, and that's great. At this point, we have current legislation pending in front of both the federal Senate and House, and the Assembly and the Senate. I don't believe that it is our duty to dictate this policies. I wouldn't believe it's our duty to dictate immigration or gun policy. Those are, those are better left to the governments to handle those. It is, it is, it is hard for me to look at this and say, this is the best use of our time as a city, when we've got so many other things. And in an earlier meeting this evening on a study session, we, that, that response was used, that we have better things to do with our time than this, and I truly believe that we have better things to do with our time than to dictate what consenting adults have to do with something that a product is completely legal. So I won't support a ban on this in any way, shape, or form with carve-outs, be it there or not.
Well, you've heard a lot, and I tend to agree with certainly most of the points that have been made this evening, and do wish to thank the community for providing some input. Frankly, there was a little more support than I anticipated, so I was pleased to at least hear that, that viewpoint and take it into, into consideration. I think Mary Beth makes a good point with regard to the other communities. You know, we've, we as a, as a broader community, that is Marin County community, I think, think these things through to a pretty complete, and in my view, most, for the most part, satisfactory conclusions, and I do see the trend, trend line. So I, I will be in favor of the ban as, as prescribed, or at least having to come back for further consideration and discussion, and perhaps we can think some, through some of these issues. John, you're right, in my view, with regard to the restriction of adults and their behavior, as long as it doesn't infringe upon others in a negative way. So I must admit, I'm kind of going back and forth and torn a little bit on this, because I want to do everything we can to, to send the right message to our youth, and I think a restriction is the right direction to do so. I thank Rebecca for giving us an A way back when. We said, okay, what do we have to do to get an A, and let's do that and drive in that direction, and this seems to be further enhancing that, that direction, not overwhelming, but I think it's a good signal to the community as to where we're at. So I appreciate the comments made. I think you hopefully have plenty to work with, and we'll be able to come back with something that reflects the sentiment of the council and the aggregate. So I want to thank you once again for doing that, and if there are any last comments, I appreciate that. But if not, and you're satisfied you have enough to work with, and perhaps give us some additional time to think through the comments that were made, and certainly those in my case of fellow councilmembers, to solidify my own thoughts, I'll appreciate the first reading.
Yes, we appreciate your clarity, and I think what I heard is the majority of the council would like to see this come back, assuming that the answers to those questions that have come up are answered satisfactorily, so that there's, you know, data is showing that this, you know, that it should be coming back and that sort of thing. So I think that we'll look into those things. We're happy to meet with VIP vapes as we would meet with anyone who would like to meet with us on any policy topic. So I think it probably won't be back in front of you at the next meeting, because it sounds like we've got some work to do before that, but I think that, and we'll also reach out to Dr. Willis and things like that. So assuming that all of those things continue to point to the, to coming back to is something that's similar to staff's recommendation, we'll bring it forward at that time.
Yeah, and I particularly appreciate the comment with regard to Dr. Willis. I mean, we, we, you know, for the most part, need some help on this thing, it seems to me.
One follow-up question to, you mentioned the statistic about the thirty-three percent of their parents bought, you know, the sixty-six other percent of how they access that. Do you have those, those figures of where that, where that is? And...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that is, let me pull it up. I see it, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The other two are availability of flavors such as mint candy or chocolate, and then the final one was the belief that they are less harmful than other forms of tobacco.
Okay, so I guess, I guess my question is not, not why they bought them, but how they obtained them. So if thirty-three percent was obtained by their parents or other adult buying them for, how did they, how did they, since it is an illegal product to obtain under the age of twenty-one, how did the rest get those?
I'll look at the, it's an FDA report, so I'll pull that and bring that back.
That would, that would be helpful, because if the whole precipice of this, of this ordinance is to, to help decrease youth use of that, and by, and if we don't know how they're getting access to it, then how are we sure that by doing this would actually decrease that use? Because I don't, I don't, I didn't see that anywhere, so.
Probably internet, my guess. Any case, with that, I'm sorry, do you need a motion on this?
Yes.
Can we have a motion that directs staff to the next step?
So I move that we accept the report and we provide a direction.
Thank you. And second?
Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Cullen?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
No.
Councilmember Vice Mayor McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I matter curious four one. Excuse me, and thanks, thanks once again, everyone. We'll move on to councilmembers' reports.
Very quickly, I was able to stand in for Mary Beth at the General Plan 2040, and the work is continuing. The big news was, and I'm, Jim, hopefully you'll put it in a Friday memo, about the charrette and the public outreach part of it. So we are obviously all welcome to participate for that. I think it's, I can't remember the dates, it's the beginning of May, I remember that. And the fascinating, I think, great idea was, you know, the former jewelry store, which is across from Royal Ground, that building?
Right next to Scandinavian Designs.
Right next to Scandinavian Designs. So we, the city, will be taking over that space for two days, and that's where the downtown charrette will be held, so people can drop in. It's literally right where people are. So that's coming up. It's, I know it's Thursday, Friday.
It's after the, it's after the next council meeting, so I'll make sure I announce it at the next council meeting.
Okay, so that we, there's a lot of discussion about that, and then we talked about the downtown precise plan and some more visioning. So, thank you, Mary Beth. I always enjoy participating in that.
Do you know when the, the next meeting is? I may have an interest in attending.
The next one?
Next meeting of the 2040?
Sure do. It's May eighth.
What is it?
Of the General Plan Steering Committee?
Yeah.
May eighth.
May eighth, thanks.
Six p.m. And they provide sandwiches.
Oh, in that case, for sure. I don't believe it's on that deal.
From six p.m. to nine p.m.
More than we got tonight.
There you go. John, any others? I brought a couple of things just to, to, it was on my desk, and I was planning to clear my desk, and so I brought it for you. They are, one, the Opportunity Zone, so you know where they're at, if you may already, but if not, there you go. And then, two, at the last SMART meeting, one of the items I asked to be discussed was the MUP throughout, and they put together kind of a nice chart that shows the status, so I thought I'd share that with you as well. And give that to you. And let's see, any other comments or reports? Which case, let's turn to item, well, successor agency, consent calendar, is there, a motion with regard to consent calendar?
I move consent calendar.
Thank you. And?
Second?
And second, roll call, please.
Member Bushy?
Aye.
Member Cullen?
Aye.
Member Gamblin?
Aye.
Vice Chair McCullough?
Aye.
Chairman Phillips?
I matter curious five zero, and we shall adjourn. Thanks, everyone.